I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council. Today, of course, Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. We'd like to welcome everybody here in audience and of course, any or who might be watching via the internet. We'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Pat.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Cameron McIntosh of the Family Bible Church, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I would invite everybody to stand for that, and afterwards, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Cameron Pat.
Thank you, Board. As Mayor Watkins has told you, Pastor P is unfortunately unable to make it, so I will be delivering the invocation to you. Out of reverence for the Lord God, I would ask everyone to bow their heads as we pray tonight. Father God, we thank you for your divine providence in giving us the privilege to live in Kingman, Arizona, Mojave County, and in this country, Lord. Thank you for the United States of America. We are a privileged people to live free in this constitutional republic. We understand liberty and freedom has a price tag and that each and every generation has to continue to fight for these rights. That liberty may cost us much, and we understand, Lord, that that may even cost us our own blood. And so, we give thanks to you as our Creator for life, liberty, and the gospel message of your Son, Jesus Christ. We give thanks to you for watching over us when our nation has sought to expel you from our government, from our schoolhouse, to our courthouse, and also into the White House. Help us this day as decisions are made that affect each and every one of us here in this room and out in our community as well. Give wisdom to these leaders, Lord. Help them to understand, follow, and obey the laws that you have set in place as Creator of all things. And in your mercy, I pray you also lead them to an understanding of their desperate need of a Savior. For every man and woman will give an account of themselves before you, Lord. Without your Son, Jesus Christ, living and dying in our place, we are all condemned and under your just punishment. Thank you for your only begotten Son, the Lord Christ Jesus, who died in our place of guilty sinners and satisfied your wrath against all idolatry and lawlessness. I pray for the mayor, I pray for the vice mayor, I pray for the board here tonight, and all, and everybody that's here in this room and in our community as well. Lord, I also pray for those who serve us here in the city and in the county. I pray for the police, the sheriff's department, I pray for the fire department, and I pray for all the public servants here that serve the community, Lord. Help us. Help us, Lord, to do better in leaving behind a greater generation and legacy for our children, our grandchildren, and even our great-grandchildren. Father, I ask that you find this prayer acceptable in your sight, oh, Lord, my God, my strength. I lift my hands and humbly pray this in your loving Son, Jesus Christ's loving name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item one, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. As our call to the public, first, we have Ms. Lori Barthlow. If she'd like to come forward.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Lori Voss Barthlow, and tonight, I'm here with Kingman Main Street. We just want to make sure that you remember us and remember that we're in favor of the Beale Street Infrastructure Project. I just wanted to give you a quick update. Since the last time you saw us, we had a great rally in downtown Kingman where we signed up 50 more people, members of the public, who are also in favor of this project. And a lot of those same people, some of them are in the room this evening, wrote cards, wrote postcards to all of you, and the city clerk will have copies for each of you to read. I didn't really want to make a big speech. I just wanted to let you know we're still here. You like our shirts? Wanted to say hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mr. David Amschok.
Mayor, he is for item 3A.
Oh, he is. I'm sorry, Mr. Amschok. We will get to you. Thank you, Annie. Okay, item number two, consent agenda.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. There was one other one that I handed.
That's what I thought, Annie. I thought there was a third one.
Two for 3A and two for call to the public.
I'm sorry, what?
There was two for item 3A and two for call to the public.
Hmm, okay. I don't see them. I'm sorry, I found them. Too many papers. Okay. Mr. Gary Waters.
Hello, Mayor, Council.
Sir, can you use the microphone, please? Pull it towards you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that better? I'm currently here on behalf of the Odd Fellas, Kingman Odd Fellas. We're a fraternal organization. You know that we have the Canemex Bypass coming through downtown Kingman, and there might be an opportunity there to provide a little help to some of our fraternities or fraternal organizations in town. I don't know if you've noticed, the, you probably haven't, the fraternal signs that are actually, when you're coming in through Coyote Pass, they're currently on the Chamber of Commerce billboard, basically. The billboard's fine, but at the bottom is where the fraternal signs are, right at the bottom. And when you're driving into town, you got to look over the opposite lane to see those signs, which nobody does. They never know what I'm talking about. Now, just for contrast, here's the DPS signs here, the signs that are by the DPS building. You can see it from the highway very easily. Since we're going to be tearing into the mountain and doing all this work out there, it would be really great if the city just put some signposts up. You don't even need to worry about the signage. We'll take care of mounting them. Just if you put those right into the entrance of town, people coming in through the pass will know that we actually have some good fraternal organizations, service organizations in this town. Something that we should be advertising. I've reached out to the Elks and the Eagles and some of the others, and they're on board. So, again, it would help all of us if we just had some way of showing that we're present in the city. It'd be a cheap win. So, thanks for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Waters.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask staff to please get into contact with Mr. Waters to help him with that process. Oh, Joel Fried will be in contact with you. Thank you.
That's actually my card.
Item number two, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, I hope, I pray that all of you have had a chance to take a look at the agenda. Are there any, is there anything that needs to be pulled and discussed? Okay, hearing none, can we have a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Old Business, item 3A, draw site litigation. The city of Kingman has negotiated a settlement with the United States Department of Justice to remediate the draw site located at the Kingman Airport. DOJ has agreed to compensate the city of Kingman $52.5 million. This money will be utilized to remove the draw material from the site. The city of Kingman has hired Haley and Aldrich to remediate the draw site. It is expected to begin the process soon. It will take several months for the site to be remediated. Staff recommends approval. Carl, you want to take lead on this?
Yes, sir, that would be me. So, it basically kind of summarizes where we're at. We've spent, I don't know, since 2011 informally, and then roughly 2013 when we initiated the litigation to work on getting this taken care of through the help of the council, manager, finance department, public works, all the various departments. We've managed to reach a conclusion to the legal aspect of this, and this is where, at this point, where DOJ is willing to provide the city with, as we noted, the $52.5 million to remediate the site. I asked if they could bring like a big check, but that didn't work. They said no. I know the question's going to be, when are we going to get it? I don't know. Currently, the consent decree is at the Army Corps of Engineers for their review. They have to approve it as the agency responsible. It was already approved by DOJ. So, once that's finished, which we're hoping, it could be up to four weeks. Hopefully, it'll be quicker than that. Once the Army Corps of Engineers is okay with this process, the next step is part of this settlement requires we amend the original complaint. It's just minor technicality. That'll take roughly a week to get that paperwork done. Then it gets filed in with the court. Once it's filed and approved by the court, which again shouldn't take hopefully too long, a week maybe, the payment process will begin. Now, DOJ said it could take up to two months, but they don't expect it to take that. They know that we are in a time crunch. The DOJ folks are at the end of their assignment with the department that's handling this, so they want to make sure that they've finished it before they move on. So, with that, we've been speaking with Haley and Aldrich, the engineers. Would they be willing to begin the process prior to the payment in the bank? They would have to, they're not going to start until it's been signed off on and approved, which makes sense. Then we know the money's coming. So, the hope is, and it seems they're receptive, to begin the process knowing that this money is coming. I'm going to say a timeframe. I regret saying it, but I'm going to say it because I'm eternally optimistic that they can start early May. So, that's my report. I am very happy. I know some people say it took me long enough to get us there, and I'm sorry it took us that long, but that's just the process. So, I think that's where we're at.
It's all good news. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Cooper? Yes, Counselor.
Ten years. I am really happy that we are finally here, and I just thank everyone on the staff that's worked on this and thank the public for their patience. I know this is a really big deal, and it's gone on for too long. But we are finally here, and this is going to be a great improvement for our airport and industrial park. So, I just want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. We have two people from the audience that would like to speak, so Mr. Amschok, now we can pick on you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council. I'm the commissioner, the chairman of the Airport Advisory, the Airport Industrial Park Advisory Commission. And on behalf of the commission and the flying population of our community, we are grateful and thankful that this nightmare of almost two decades is coming to a completion, and we encourage you to vote in favor of accepting the $52.5 million. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Amschok. Mr. Paul Gaines.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Paul Gaines, and I have a business at the, an aviation business at the airport, on the airport side. When I was making the decision to relocate my business from the Atlanta area, I met with the then-management of the airport, which was the Kingman Airport Authority. And I was assured that within five years, the draw site would be taken care of, and that was 14 years ago. This has been a major impediment for the expansion of my business and for any growth of business at the south end of the airfield period. The most recent example that I have personally is that I've been given the opportunity to become a Cirrus factory authorized service center. And for those of you not familiar with Cirrus aircraft, they are one of the most, if not the most popular, single-engine aircraft produced in the world right now, made in Duluth, Minnesota, and I happen to own one. And so, they sent a factory representative out in a Cirrus factory aircraft to come visit me, and I spoke with them over texting and email and phone, and I said, when you land, just stay parked down at the center of the airfield, and I'll come get you. He said, no, I'll just taxi down to your end, and I said, let's talk about that. Just park down there, I'll come pick you up. And he didn't really understand because I wanted to be a service center, and it didn't make sense to have him hold at the middle of the airport and not come to my facility. So, I picked him up, and we drove through the draw site area, and it became very obvious what the problem was, so that topic came up. And it's expensive to do this, to become a factory authorized service center. They expect a lot, and they expect your facility to be in such a way. They were interviewing myself, kind of my employees in our place, but the long and the short of it is, is that I won't do this unless this is done, and I think it's going to happen. But it's, it sounds like it's finally going to happen. I mean, we just can't, I laugh every time, and I'm not laughing at you, Carl. You're trying to give a timeframe because we're all kind of nervously laughing, when's it going to happen? But it can't, and it won't happen unless it does. And I anticipate, I believe, if it does, that I will build another hangar out there, and I've got a 10,000-square-foot place now, and this could be a real boon to the business as well as open up the whole other area. So, I hope the council has the wisdom to accept this settlement from the federal government and move forward with this project finally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. I forgot to ask counsel if there's any questions for Mr. Amschok or Mr. Gaines. Nope, okay. Mr. Gaines, I appreciate your patience because I know your business is probably one of the closest to where that, the airfield has been torn up there. And so, especially, you had lots of patients after that five-year mark when you originally were told it was going to be cleaned up, so we appreciate that. And of course, we appreciate the patience of all those associated with the airport. We have a great airport, and this is a great step in moving forward. So, Counsel, if we can have a motion then approving the draw site litigation?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four. New business for a consideration of resolution number 5447, approving a minor amendment to the Kingman General Plan 2030. Silver Rock Enterprises Incorporated applicant and property owner, and Mark Blomquist Architects, PLLC, agent for the owner, have requested a minor amendment to the Kingman General Plan 2030 to change the projected land use of certain property from intermediate-density residential 9 through 16 dwelling units per acre to community commercial. If approved, the minor general plan amendment would facilitate a concurrent request for rezoning of a subject site to C3 commercial service business. Although the property owner, although the property owner is potentially, to potentially expand their existing business on the property to the south of the subject property, staff recommends approval. I think we have a representative. Yes?
Yes, aye.
Gary?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Good evening. As the mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing for a minor general plan amendment for certain property to change from intermediate-density residential on the general plan map to community commercial. This was previously heard and considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant is Silver Rock Enterprises, with the representative being Kurt Duncan. The, if approved, this general plan amendment will facilitate consideration of a concurrent request, another application, to rezone the subject property, and that is in case number RZ 230002. Sorry about the mistake on there. That'll be considered after this case. The subject property here is located on North Willow Road, and it's highlighted with a yellow star there. It's just north of Airway. This map is showing you the general plan map, the 2030 general plan map, and the current designation of the property is the intermediate-density residential, which allows 9 to 16 dwelling units per acre. The property that it's associated with is to the south, and it's in that more reddish area, pink reddish area, which is the community commercial designation, and that's the designation they desire for this property. So, that would extend that color to the north, which is commercial versus residential. The current zoning of the property, again, on the star there on the map, is R2, which is a residential district, and the property to the south is C3 commercial. Utilities, the North Willow Road is built out. It has sidewalks, curb gutter sidewalk, street pavement, water and sewer infrastructure. So, it's, this is an ideal location for infill development. And you can see the, again, the property that it's associated with is that property to the south, including the commercial building just north of Airway between North Willow and North Wells. This is just some site photos looking west from North Willow Road, and that is our zoning sign that we need to post. The property that isn't, is being considered tonight is that area that's bounded in the yellow dash line to try to help you. The existing business that this is associated with, this property is, is just to the south, and to your left on here is Willow Road and the subject property to your right. From the existing business that I pointed out on the last slide, this is a view toward the subject property with Willow Road on your right side. This is looking north. For the public hearing, surrounding property owners were notified within 300 feet. The site was posted, and public notice was placed in the Kingman Minor on both, it ran both on the 29th of January and the February 19th. No comments have been received thus far. Department agency comments, we did receive comments from city engineering, which are factored in to the staff report and will be relayed to the applicant, and not jumping ahead of myself, but we don't conditionally approve general plan amendments, but these comments will come up in the other hearing as potential conditions of approval. And these are regarding driveway locations and striping and other standards that we require. The citizen review process, the applicant did follow our citizen review processes outlined in the zoning code. They held meetings on December 19th and the 21st, but no attendees, so no summary really to give you here. General amendment process, it has to be a minor or a major amendment. This is a minor amendment. The amendment can go through or be approved only if the amendment is consistent with the policies and objectives of the rest of the general plan, and the proposed amendment furthers the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Kingman. So, to comply with the general plan, we found that in land use element, objective three, this site would encourage a compatible mix of land uses, allowing accessibility to goods and services without extensive travel. Again, going back to that infill development that we really want to encourage to utilize existing infrastructure. And then also, growth element three, or objective three, encourage a planned mixture of land uses that provides a choice of transportation modes, which reduces automobile dependency, provided for a needed public open space and creates a sense of place. Policy 3.2, this encourages commercial development to occur around identifiable nodes and discourage strict commercial development. So, the conclusion is this proposal would support the general plan. Review of the compatibility with other land uses in the vicinity, this amendment would again change from intermediate density to commercial. The, to the north of the property is already some fourplexes, so multifamily dwellings. And also, it should be noted that even in, within the C3 zone, which they eventually want to ask for in the next hearing, that allows for higher density development, residential development as well, but then, of course, allows the commercial development to occur. Some of the standards we have to protect residential property are items such as taller fences and walls between commercial and adjacent residential zones. The recommendation, the, as I mentioned, this hearing occurred, the first part of this hearing occurred with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of this request to change the subject property from intermediate-density residential to community commercial. And that is also staff's recommendation, and in preparation, we've provided resolution number 5447, which is in your packets, if you choose to approve. I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lichness?
And Mayor, I just want to make sure you're aware, this is a public hearing as well. So, even though it doesn't specifically list it, it's actually a public hearing.
Okay. Do we need to open and close the public?
We will.
Okay. Do we want to do that then after we just, Mr. Lichness sits down?
You're more than welcome to do it before or after.
Okay, why don't we, since Mr. Lichness is up here standing, why don't we ask comments from counsel or questions for Mr. Lichness? Okay, thank you, Gary, for the minute. We'll see in a little bit. Okay, let's open a public hearing considering resolution number 5447. Are there any comments from the public on this resolution? I know we do have Mr. Duncan here in the audience today. Carl, should we ask him to come up during this time?
If he would like to come up, he's more than welcome if he'd like it.
Kurt, would you, do you have anything you need to add to what's been presented?
I don't have anything to add. Now, have your question.
Counsel? Okay, thank you, Mr. Duncan. We will close the public hearing then. So, any other comments or questions, seeing none? Can we have a motion then to approve resolution number 5447?
So moved.
We have the motion, and we have the second, right? Okay. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, item B, 4B, consideration of ordinance number 1948, rezoning certain property from residential multifamily low-density R2 to commercial service business C3. Silver Rock Enterprises Incorporated applicant and property owner, and Mark Blomquist Architects, PLLC, agent for the owner, have requested to rezone certain property from residential multifamily low-density R2 to commercial service business C3. The property is located at the 3500 block of North Willow Road, Kingman's Airport Track Lot 6, Block 7, and it's currently APN 320-06-143. If approved, the rezoning of the subject site to C3 commercial service business would facilitate the expansion of an existing service business on property to the south of the subject property. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Lichness, good to see you again.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, this is the companion case to the previous case. This is a rezoning request, and it's from multifamily low-density R2 to commercial service business. Property owner is the same, is Silver Rock Enterprises, Inc., with Kurt Duncan. Property owner is the same, it's Silver Rock Enterprises, Inc., with Kurt Duncan, the representative, and the property, you should be familiar with it somewhat, North Willow Road, north of airway. And that's the general plan. It has now in process of changing to community commercial, so you can consider this complying with the general plan now that you've approved the previous case. The current zoning of the property is R2, which is the art multifamily residential. And then the property, the the zone, sorry, that threw me off a little bit there. The property owner wishes to rezone the subject property to C3, a commercial zone. Again, the the road, North Willow Road is is built out, curb gutter sidewalk, street improvements and water and sewer infrastructure. And it is this property is associated with the property to the south. The subject property looking west, public notice notification sign, looking south, looking north. Notification was done for our code, 300-foot notification neighbors. The site was posted. The notice was in the Kingman Minor on January 29th and February 19th. No comments have been received regarding this request. Department and agency comments, we did receive comments from city engineering department, and that's in the staff report, but summarized here that adjacent driveways are standards there shall be no closer than 60 feet, and that'll come into play when they go to propose a site plan for us at a future stage. Striping on Willow Road must follow our regulation, the MBTCD regulations, and then development must be in accordance with our various standards. Citizen review process, the applicant did adhere to that and did provide two meetings and did notice the property owners within 300 feet. And I should mention, they also do have to post a sign onsite that the meeting will occur, meetings will occur. And no attendees, so no summary for you. Here's the concept plan, which is more appropriate for the rezoning because because rezoning can be conditional. Again, this is just a concept plan, there could be various forms of this, I don't, I wouldn't get too focused in on how this is laid out. But this spurred some of the review comments from staff regarding driveway locations, et cetera. So that'll be factored in. But this shows you how it is in ownership and contiguous ownership with the property to the south and the business to the south. And the hatched area is the is the subject property for the rezoning tonight. Just let me know if you need me to go back to that slide. The purpose of the request, again, is this C3 zoning designation would allow the applicant to expand, as he in his application stated, expand the 40, 4,800 square foot, single-story Silver Rock Enterprises Kingman office with a 7,500 square foot, single-story addition. The analysis for a rezoning, the commission makes a recommendation to the council on the matter to approve, approve with modifications or conditions or deny. Amendments to the zoning map may occur only if the following findings are made, that the general, the proposed amendment is consistent and conforms with the goals of the general plan and the applicable specific, specific plans. As I mentioned, this now complies with the general plan because the previous case amended the general plan to to be a commercial designation and also the objectives that are stated in the in the staff report. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, convenience or welfare of the city or will and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. The C3 zone is consistent now. The C3 zone, as I mentioned earlier, also allows multifamily residential. The zoning will encourage infill development and infill infill development is also an objective of the growth area element of the general plan. This is a long list, but the site is suitable for for construction and design and and does have access to all the various public infrastructure and services. The site is physically suitable for development of commercial or multifamily residential land uses. The site is relatively flat and has access to improved streets. The site has access to city sewer and water and sewer infrastructure. And any development will have to follow established review processes to ensure that the various standards that we've adopted are adhered to and that the part of the standards are to ensure compatibility with not only residential but adjacent businesses and and uses as well. The recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the matter at their public hearing, and they voted five to zero recommending approval of the request to change the zone of the subject property from residential multifamily low-density to commercial service business C3, subject to the following condition. The subject property parcel APN 32006143 shall be combined with at least the abutting property to the south listed there, which is currently under the same ownership. This will prevent the city from approving a site that would be in violation of our zoning table for lot requirements. The subject property does not meet the 7,500 square foot threshold for commercial zone. So in order for us to approve something that's not, we wouldn't want to approve something that's non-conforming immediately. So this condition makes it so that they have to combine it with their property to the south to ensure at least a 10,000 square foot lot will result. So that's the only condition that's been included with the prepared ordinance 1948 for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lichness. Counsel, any more, any more questions? I think it's pretty straightforward. Okay, here.
It's a public hearing as well. It just didn't get listed on the agenda.
Okay.
I apologize.
Nope, that's all right. We will open a public hearing then. Thank you, Gary. We opened the public hearing on ordinance number 1948. Is there anybody in the public that would like to have a comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing. Thank you. Counsel, I think without any other comment or question, can we have a motion then approving ordinance number 1948?
I'll move.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution, I mean, item number 4C, resolution number 5448, establishing and adopting a long-term financial planning policy. The Government Finance Officers Association has adopted a variety of best practices that identify specific financial policies and procedures to contribute to improved government management. One of the best practices relates to long-term financial planning and is the foundation for promoting a strategic, long-term approach to fiscal health. Although the City of Kingman's Finance Department has already incorporated a long-term financial planning process into the budget cycle, it is currently an unwritten and informal one. City staff has created a written, formal, long-term financial planning policy to serve as the foundation in formally promoting a strategic, long-term approach to fiscal health. Staff recommends approval. Ms. Tina Mullin, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. Mayor, you covered that very well. But I will just highlight a few of the items in the financial planning policy. And I think I want to start first with reiterating that we do currently follow a long-term financial planning process. It just has not been formalized into a policy and is not written. So what's in the policy in front of you this evening are things that we are doing, we are just formalizing it. So the policy covers a purpose, which is, of course, ensuring fiscal health. It also covers three financial principles, which are financial sustainability, financial vulnerability, and financial flexibility. And then it also covers the analysis, and that's the analysis of making sure that we're ensuring fiscal health, such as performing a five-year forecast, making sure that we're meeting target reserves, making sure that we can fund a five-year capital improvement plan, as well as the future operating costs that are associated with those. And then it has an implementation and integration. So certainly, we want to look at this policy when we are developing policies, when we're creating master plans and putting together our strategic plan. And we are excited to finally begin this journey of formalizing our our policies, and we're expecting to bring several more to you over the course of the next six to nine months. So with that, we would recommend that council approve resolution number 5448, adopting the policy in front of you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Any questions from counsel for Tina? Okay. Carl, do we need to have a public hearing on this one, too?
I think we're good.
We're good? Okay, just wanted to make sure before we move forward. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Counsel, then, can we have a motion for resolution number 5448, establishing and adopting a long-term financial planning policy?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, we have the motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, item five, department reports. Item 5A, fiscal year 2021, 2022, financial audit report.
Thank you, Mayor. As just a reminder, that each year we go through an extensive audit process to look at our financial policies, as well as how we are basically accounting for and tracking all of our revenues and expenditures. And I just want to put a big thank you out to Tina and her team as this occupies a huge amount of their time. And it is an important, obviously, an important process that the city engages in each year. And I am happy to report that I have never had, since I've been here, an auditor suggest or feel like we were not incredibly helpful through their audit and the process of getting them all the documentation. And that go, that credit goes to Tina and her leadership for her financial team. And so with that, we understand that this is coming a little bit later in the year, but it is when our auditor could fit it into the schedule. So I'll turn the time over and let Tina introduce our auditor and anything else she feels like she'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. So we have on Zoom, Brian Hemmerly, who is our audit partner for our audit engagement. He is also a partner with Baker Tilly, and he has a very simple and short presentation for you this evening.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you all hear me okay?
We can hear you fine. Thanks.
Great, great. Well, hey, thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate getting the opportunity to share our audit report with you. Hopefully, you can see my screen just fine. I've got a brief presentation like Tina mentioned. Again, my name is Brian Hemmerly. I am the lead audit partner for the City of County, City of Kingman this June 30, 2022, fiscal year. Our report, we issued four reports this year. The first report is really related to your financial statements. The second is related to your federal spending. And then the third one we issued is related to your annual expenditure limitation report. And I'll take a moment to briefly describe each one of those. One thing I do have to make sure I I communicate with the council is that we do provide reasonable assurance over the financial statements. We don't, we don't provide absolute assurance. The difference is that absolute assurance would require that we test every transaction at the city. In the in the case of the statute with the state of Arizona and what is required of your financial statement audit, we provide reasonable assurance that everything is materially correct. So we do use materiality levels. We use statistically valid sampling. We test your internal controls, we observe those controls. And really, what it comes down to at the end of days, that report that we are issuing on your financial statements did receive a clean opinion this year, so an unmodified opinion. Good news for the city once again this year. We did state in our engagement letter on May 10, 2022, what our intentions with the audit are, and we also indicated what management's responsibilities were. We didn't have any difficulties encountered during our audit, no uncorrected misstatements, and no disagreements with management. There was one new accounting policy that was implemented by the city this year. This is GASB number 87. Your government accounting standards requires that leases are recounted for a bit differently in this year and going forward. In the past, you had capital leases and operating leases. Now, going forward, really, the city only has what's going to be considered sort of like capital leases. We just call them leases now. So all those operating leases that were on your books as rent expense or, let's say, rent revenue for, you know, maybe hangar rentals at your airport, those are no longer going to just run through your profit and loss statements. Those will go up onto the balance sheet. They'll be amortized over the course of the contract period. So that's one major change this year, and that has been disclosed in note one to the financial statements. The annual expenditure limitation report this year, the economic estimates commissioned for the City of Kingman had a limitation of $109.2 million. The city only spent about $50.1 million, subject to that limitation, so the city is well below the limitation. That has been filed with the Auditor General's Office with the state of Arizona timely, and it has been accepted. And then this last report is related to what we call the single audit. This is related to your federal spending. This year, the city spent $6.7 million in federal grant money. Whenever the city spends more than $750,000, the federal government requires that we do a separate audit of just the federal spending. And they require that we have what's called a major program. The major program this year that the federal government required was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund grant. We did audit that grant to ensure that the city was spending that money in accordance with how the federal government required it to be spent, and the city received what we considered a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion on that federal spending this year. We had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no reportable instances that we thought needed to be recommended to the city. Some really high-level graphs here, just to give you kind of a look at the 2020 year, 2022 year compared to 2021. The light blue is or light green is your 2022 year, and the darker bar is a 2021. You'll see assets and liabilities are both up. That is highly related to the lease standard going into effect because we did have to add lease liabilities as well as the related assets to your capital assets on the book this year. You also had some new, this year, you're well aware of, I'm sure, obviously, your pension bonds that were issued, so that's also included in your liabilities this year. Overall, your net position, your equity has gone up, and then revenues and expenses are pretty much flat with where they've been in the past year. And my last graph here is a three-year look, 2020, 2021, and 2022, of the overall equity or fund balance for all your governmental funds, your general fund, your other major funds, like the HERF fund and your capital project funds. And you'll see there's a nice trend upwards over the last three years. You'll also see that the capital projects fund was pretty much zero the last two years, and this year it bumped up. That's more likely than not related to the impact fee, that impact fees that have been collected or being spent on major capital projects. So that fund became major this year and has been added to the major funds in your financial statement. That's a lot of accounting for you, but that is my presentation. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I guess I better turn my mic on, I'm sorry. Thank you again, Mr. Hemmerly, for that report.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 5B, medical professionals recruitment and retention. I'd like to welcome Dr. Ryan Swap here.
Okay, I think we're good. I'm Ryan Swap. I was invited to come here and speak a little bit about physician recruiting and why that matters here. So I am a pathologist. I, some of you may know what that means, some of you may not, but basically, what I do all day is look at a microscope and make diagnoses. So I'm diagnosing cancer and that kind of thing. So you have any experience with that? That's, I usually don't see patients, but that's my role at the hospital. I've been here for about 10 years. I work at KRC, I work at WRC, and also at UMA Regional Medical Center. I'm a member of the KRC board. I don't represent the hospital in any way in my comments here tonight. I'm here simply as a private citizen. And and I think what qualifies me to talk about this, let's see if this is going to advance, is that I'm the best physician recruiter ever. No, I'm, I'm not. But this was a really kind memento that I got when I finished working as the physician counterpart for the Physician Recruiting Committee at KRC. And I didn't get paid to do that job at all. That was a volunteer position, but it was probably the position that I loved the most working at the hospital because I knew every time that we hired a new physician, we brought somebody good on. somebody good on, we changed Kingman for the better incrementally, and that that would continue to pay dividends down the road. I probably spent 10 to 20 hours a week doing this. It was like a part-time job, and I did it for a couple of years. And so I have some insight into, you know, the challenges, the barriers, and the opportunities that we have. I want to talk just a little bit about the hospital. I know this may be old hat for some of you, and so I apologize if that's the case. These are the two campuses of KRM-C. But KRM-C is unique, and it's becoming even more uncommon in today's healthcare landscape. We're a nonprofit hospital here at KRM-C. It's a local board, and those local board members are unpaid, they're volunteered, but they have a fiduciary responsibility. What I think is really important, and this is the only hospital in the county that's like this, we don't have shareholders, we don't have investors. The money that's generated in terms of revenue at the hospital is given back to the community in capital projects, in payment to, in wages and benefits. And what it means for the community is that the hospital's willing to invest sometimes in subspecialties, that, you know, finances aren't the only thing that are considered, there are services, you know, we're human beings, we're, are we fulfilling the mission of the hospital to provide medical care to the community? An example of that I have here is OB. You know, if you look at the other hospitals in the county, they either have limited OB or no OB at all, and we have a very strong program there. We just have better equipment, you know. It's funny, sometimes people will certainly come from other communities to Kingman Regional. Every once in a while, we'll have somebody come down from Las Vegas and say, hey, you know, I read about your training, and, you know, we really want you, you know, to read my biopsy, or, you know, whatever. And that's flattering, and it also speaks to the kind of quality that we get in, you know, a kind of a rural town. My wife and I are, we've lived here 10 years, we love it here, and my parents moved here. My brother moved here with his family. You know, I never thought that would happen, we're so happy for that. And so we've done a good job recruiting family members, but it's really hard to recruit doctors, and this is a phenomenon that's been in the lay press a lot. And I couldn't find the article here, but I recently read one in the Wall Street Journal that highlighted this. So there are fewer doctors now, you know, as we rode this economic wave of prosperity, you know, there were a lot of doctors who were over 55, they retired. Right now, it's just hard to recruit in any specialty, and they don't really, you know, they don't want to live in rural communities for the most part. They're fine taking a pay cut to live in an urban space that they feel like meets their needs. And so our backs are already kind of against the wall. Why is this important to city council? Why should this be important to the city at all? Well, it's important if you've tried to get an appointment to see a doctor recently. I don't know, has anybody tried to get an appointment? It's, you know, I'm a little bit embarrassed, because it's just so many months out for so many specialties and just primary care specifically. It's just really challenging. You know, part of that, the hospital is addressing operationally, but also, we, you know, we don't have enough providers. And so when my parents moved into the community, it became even more important for me, because they're at an age where healthcare really matters to them, and they're at a higher risk of having an adverse event. It's really not convenient for us to drive to other communities to have procedures done. It's frustrating, and also, you know, I don't know if you've ever been in the situation where you've had a family member who is hospitalized, or at least comes to the ER here, and then is shipped out to Las Vegas or to Phoenix. You know, you have to drive, you have to stay there, it's expensive, you're not plugged in to providers who, you know, kind of care about the people in your community. We have, we have higher levels of service in intervention radiology, you know, cardiology matters, these are life-saving procedures. And as an example, we recently recruited an endocrinologist. So, you know, if you have, if you know someone with diabetes, or who needs to have another endocrine-related situation, that's the first time we've had one, you know, it makes, it makes a big difference. We're constantly competing, so every time we're recruiting, you know, if somebody wants to live in, we're not only, our competition really isn't limited to this map. You know, we're competing with rural hospitals everywhere. So for the subset of physicians who are willing to live in a rural place, you know, we have competition with Prescott, Cottonwood, Flagstaff, SLO, you know, not including Bullhead and Havasu. And so we have to differentiate ourselves, we have to make ourselves attractive, we have to have some of, some of the things that, we have to at least be able to provide some of the amenities that they can find in some of these other communities. These are some of the barriers that commonly came up. You know, people worried about schools, or worry about a remote location, not being close to the airport, you know, nothing to do is something that, you know, people say commonly. The shopping issue, where we are addressing with Kingman Crossing, city's joint venture with the hospital, and also the other interchange at Rancho Santa Fe. I mean, I think that that's going to really make some differences. Kingman has changed a lot since I moved here. We've had some really big wins, and they're listed here. You know, pickleball is becoming really kind of fun, even though I'm a tennis guy personally. I remember when, the first time I drove down Stockton Hill and the bike lanes were there, that was like such a great day. I had a really warm feeling driving down Stockton Hill. Bill Street Theater has been a game changer, you know, to be able to participate in the theater. Those are the kinds of things that physicians come and say, and not only physicians, obviously, you know, anyone who's looking at a job here in town, these are important to them, increased restaurants. And this trail system, I think, you know, we can't praise it enough, the new White Cliff system and everything out at Monolith, I love riding out there. Those things are really, really important. So this, you know, I don't know a lot about the association with CREDA, but that's an important association. I talked with Travis Pennington recently about his proposed trail that would go through Kingman Crossing and other areas. I'm not here necessarily to promote that, but I do endorse it. I mean, I think that, that projects like this, you know, they don't bring direct revenue, but they, they put us in a virtuous cycle that everyone benefits from. And so I would just urge you to be, you know, open-minded and broad-minded when you're considering initiatives this May, you know, when we're looking at budget. Parks, this is, you know, the splashbed here, we need more of them, we need more parks, you know, we, we need to partner with our developers and with our builders to put in more parks. Those things really matter, to have a park within walking distance that your kids can, you know, ride their bikes to with their friends and play. That's what makes somebody say, hey, I want to live here, I can see myself here. You know, soccer fields have been talked about many times. Soccer has probably become the most popular sport for youth here. Our kids play on travel soccer teams, we go to Bullhead for tournaments. There's no reason why Kingman couldn't host tournaments. That would be an economic boon to the city, as well as provide us, you know, places to play. It would just increase the profile of those opportunities. A rec center, this is huge. If Laramie, Wyoming can do this, we can do this. I don't know if you've driven through it, no disrespect to Laramie, but, but a rec center, I know that's an expensive project, and it may seem like pie in the sky, but it's not. It's something that, you know, when I drive up to see family in Utah up I-15, every little town has a really nice rec center. That's something that we should shoot for and have. It's something that, that really bonds our community, it's a source of pride for us. And these are things that, you know, when we bring a physician recruit and they see a rec center that's nice like this, it's a no-brainer for them. You know, street beautification, it's important. I remember when we first moved here, and then we spent a weekend down in Palm Springs, and I just noticed, you know, what they had around their roads. Again, I know when we have a limited budget, that sometimes we want to overlook these things, but I'm encouraging you to be broad-minded about it. I've already talked about bike lanes. Be really nice to have a bike lane that went up Wallaby Mountain Road, you know, that connected with Stockton Hill, and that, you know, connected everything together. You know, this is an old rendering of Kingman Crossing that you probably know better than I. I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. And then lastly, code enforcement, again, you know this better than I do, but having a really nice-looking community means something. So, you know, you're stewards of our community. You have been elected by the people to make difficult choices, and I would encourage you to be representatives of all of the people, so that we can recruit physicians here, providers, people who can, you know, when they don't, when people don't have access to care, they show up later for big problems, it has more morbidity for them, and they tend to be in the hospital longer. So it, you know, it really matters. Think about projects that maybe won't have direct, you know, monetary, direct monetary effects, but things that will pay dividends in the long run. I know these are broad, I'm just painting with broad strokes here, but I think that you understand where I'm coming from. I'm asking you to think big, think about all the people in the community, think about how we can build a city that we want to live in, we want our family members to live in 10, 20, 30 years from now. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Swap, thank you for that presentation. Any comments or questions from council?
Thanks.
Yes, counselor.
I want to thank Dr. Swap for that presentation. Section 5.3 of our city's strategic plan reads, "Partner with medical providers in their efforts to attract and retain healthcare professionals." This is a really important piece of our plan. The entire plan is important, but this is just another piece, having that access to healthcare, building a community that will attract and retain all professionals is really important. And so I thank you for your insight today, it's much appreciated.
Great, thank you. And Counselor Celia, I did notice the bike lanes. I know you had a big effort in getting bike lanes, so once again, kudos to you. Okay. Item 5C, Pavement Preservation Funding Plan. Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. We did our, kind of our, what we term, kind of the budget kickoff meeting with half-year check-in at the 1st of February, and at that meeting, we had provided a presentation at the end of that meeting with, that was really dedicated to pavement preservation. Now that Prop 415 was voted down, the council had asked that we, we look at possible ways in which we could do some pavement preservation, albeit at a lower level than what we were proposing through Prop 415 funding. And so just to make sure that that message is received and understood, we've taken that presentation, boiled it down to really the option, I think we refer to it in that workshop as Option A3. So I've asked Jack to kind of take that presentation, strip it down to what the final outcome of that was, and walk you through that. So, Mr. Plante.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Give me one second here, and either myself or Annie can help me with the presentation, maybe? Oh, share screen, sorry. Only been a couple of weeks, and I forgot already, huh?
There's a lot of stuff in here right now. Aaron, can you make that full screen for me, please?
Awesome, yeah. Talking to the man behind the curtain here, huh? All right, so as Mr. Foggan indicated, this is a bit of a boiled-down presentation that was provided to you guys at the February 2nd work session. And so, again, we'll touch on pavement preservation history, where we are now, and the recommendations we have moving to the future. My favorite ugly graph, oh, see, I hate it so much, I want to skip it. All right, so this is the total funding by revenue source, and based on percentage. So out of all the services that are provided within the Streets Division, this is the funding mechanism, or the percentage of funding that's received for each of those. If you look to the left side of that, you see yellows and blues in there. Up till about fiscal year 11, 2011, there was actually HERF and some general fund revenues that helped support the operation of the Streets Division. Fiscal year 11...
Jack, you actually said HERF, I think you meant lottery.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It was lottery. Thank you, Mr. Foggan. The orange is the HERF, the blue is lottery, and then the yellow is general fund. As you can see, 2000, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2010, that was stripped back, and in 2011, fiscal year 2011, HERF was the sole source of funding for the operations. And fiscal year 2012, a 1% barn restaurant tax was initiated, and those funds were dedicated to pavement preservation, and those are what have supported pavement preservation throughout, from the time of its inception. The red you see on the right side for fiscal year 1819, that was the tax that was enacted and then later repealed, and those funds were actually dedicated for pavement preservation as well. Those were used actually to do a couple of large projects like Stockton Hill, Andy Devine, and were put toward those. One thing I'd like to talk about in here a little bit, you can't really see the dollar amount, we'll see that as we get into the paving, pavprez funding history, is the amount of buying power you have for the dollar. I mentioned it before, 1990s, late 90s, early 2000s, 3-inch milling fills, similar to what you see going on on Andy Devine right now, was about $7 to $10 per square yard, and right now, we're well in excess of $20 a square yard. So, you know, those costs have tripled over the years. What that equates to, you have the same dollar amount essentially, less buying power, and we have more traffic. We have more traffic that are working on our roads and helping to deteriorate those. So I just want to talk about current statistics a little bit. The pie chart on the top left, that's the actual breakdown by percentage of lane miles in our functional class. We're over 400 lane miles currently, and as you can see, 76% of that is made up by our residential streets alone. The remainder is our arterial collectors. On the bottom right, took and broke out each one of those functional classes by its current average PCI, or the condition index, remember, red, yellow, green. And so you can see arterial, minor arterial, collector, and residential. Residential being the lowest PCI that we have currently, although it makes up the larger portion of our network. Currently, we're sitting at about a 49 on the overall, so that's averaged with everything. And you see that makes a pretty significant difference, especially since arterials make up such a small amount of the overall network. So our arterials are sitting at the 66 mark, but when you average those all together, we're below 50. So what that looks like, again, red, bad, yellow is okay, but we need to keep it from going red, and then green is good. Green's going to be our preventative maintenance treatments, yellow's going to be some rehabilitation and a little bit heavier surface treatments. Then we get into the red, we're looking, you know, maybe deep into some rehabilitations, but those are really going to be reconstructions as well. And those are, those are the largest expense you have. You guys have seen, I've kind of talked about that a lot, the further down the condition category scale we get, the higher the cost is to bring those roads back up. So this is the percent of the network by condition category, and again, I broke out the very poor roads for a specific reason. Those very pores are the roads that we know are going to be reconstructions. Those are going to be, you know, a full depth, we're going to pulverize it, we're going to do something a lot more intense than an overlay, or a chip seal, or some type of surface treatment. or a chip seal or some type of surface treatment. So, I, I kind of separated those for, just for that purpose. The remaining 51% that are in poor condition, those are going to be those, those rehabilitations. We can use heavier treatments, maybe multiple successive treatments, but this is the percentage of the network is shown on the map, so you guys can see it by percent versus just a bunch of lines on a map. So, historic pavement preservation funding. Again, it's really important to note the difference in buying power and what it costs us to do the same amount of work now. Again, a three-by-three piece of asphalt right now that's three inches thick is costing us well over $20 a square yard versus, you know, $7 to $10 30 years ago even. The, this one, you can kind of see the funding as well when everything was downgrading from the recession. So, you can see in '07, '08 period where we started to lose the general fund and the lottery and the LTAF funding that was in there, and then the HERF sweeps had started as well. So, that takes us into fiscal year 11 and 12, very little funding. All the money that was coming in from HERF was used just to take care of the other services payroll. They were doing, you know, sweeping and road grading and things that they could do, but there wasn't enough money to go out and do heavy, heavy pavement preservation. 13, that started to come back with the enacted, the barn restaurant tax. And so, those just continue to build, and you can see the peaks where, again, we had the, the sales tax increase that was enacted and ultimately repealed. Right now, we're estimating to get $5 million worth of work done this year. We had, we had a decent budget for fiscal year 22. I say decent, I believe we were around $3 million, and that's been rolled over. We'd received proposals, but we were unable to get contractors scheduled up. It was just really busy. And then we've run into the weather. The weather's been a real hamper on our day, so to speak. And we've, we are working right now. Obviously, one of the projects is rolling. We have some more proposals come in that we're planning to bring to you guys to get on and done before the end of the fiscal year. The prep work is a big portion of that. You know, we've been carrying about half staff for a big portion of the year, as we presented in the, the February 2nd meeting. We were sitting at six vacancies in that department of, a total of 14 people at that time. And that, that includes the traffic guys like the signal techs and the sign and marking techs. So, had some difficulty trying to get that complete and ready to go. We are, again, anticipating the $5 million this year and then continuing into the late summer and into the fall to complete more pavement preservation. So, I want to just take a little bit of a couple of seconds on this slide. So, we've talked about our decision tree. Again, we want to select the right treatment, right road, right time. I've left our arterial collectors off to the side because we, those are important to us. Those require the most attention. They're the biggest, the most expensive to rehabilitate, reconstruct as well. They carry the bulk of our traffic. You look at Stockton Hill and Airway, you know, you're looking at roughly 30,000 cars a day go through just that intersection. So, those are the roads that we really are focusing on at the moment, but this proposal will look at moving that up and working into our arterials. Which brings me to the red box on the right side there. In that red box is actually the decision tree for our residential. As you can see, it's mainly chip seal, and that was based on cost and some availability that I'll talk upcoming soon. And, you know, that, that falls, when we get down into the lower condition categories, we step that up a little bit and we go to scrub seal and maybe a pulverizing chip to bring those roads that are in that poor, to very poor condition back up into a serviceable condition. So, this is the A3 funding scenario that was presented to you guys in the February 2nd meeting. So, this, we ran, I couldn't tell you how many budget scenarios, and Mr. Foggan and, and Tina and I and Rob went through these and broke them down and evaluated them extensively, trying to figure out what provided the best cost benefit for the money that we're spending. What's going to give us the best value? And so, this, as it says in the header, will reduce our operating reserves to 35%. The funds that are in excess of that 35% will be allocated over an eight-year period essentially, including the money we're spending now and rolling over. I, I'm unable to show it at year, at year nine, but the pie chart you're seeing on the right-hand side, that's at year 15. So, as you can see, we go from having over half of our roads in poor to very poor condition, and we actually bring that up to 66% in good condition. We have 18 in fair, and then we have 15 that are falling into that poor. And I can't remember the exact number, but it was like a half a mile or something and very poor. So, as you can see, it makes a very significant improvement in our overall network. One thing I would like to highlight, you look at the heaviest funding is years one through eight, and again, that's that 35% that's being allocated over those eight years. And then year nine through 15, we go back to the barn restaurant funding levels. So, we're anticipating the increases, you know, in, in revenues coming in, but we carry that out for the remainder of the years. And if you look at the PCI, you can see it change. We start out, again, right now, at about a 48, and then the, the PCI jumps in year eight up to a, to a, up to a 50, I'm sorry. Year one will jump up to a 57 because we're throwing some, some funding. And at year eight, year nine, we're actually coming in at a 73. And then once that, that revenue starts to decline, once we've used up those reserves, then we go back and we're looking at the end of the 15-year cycle, albeit a overall condition of 67. So, let's talk a little bit about districts. So, we broke our whole network into a series of districts. So, what you're looking at right now is our arterial collectors. These, again, are major roads. These are the ones that we really want to focus in on and make sure that we keep in good condition, both because of the volume of traffic they, they carry and because of the significance of, I guess, significance of the traffic and of the, the cost to rehabilitate and reconstruct them. These roads take, require a little more care, just based on the volume of traffic. You know, again, we're going to look at them more often than we will in a residential neighborhood. And I guess to go back for just a minute, red and blue doesn't represent anything significant to the community. That's just, we broke those into two sides so we can manage those a little bit better in, inside of our management system. So, the slide you're looking at right now is residential. So, we did the same thing. We wanted to break our residential into districts, and that would allow us to plan, schedule, and execute. We did that on a neighborhood approach. So, we can come into a neighborhood, if you don't build districts into your system, it'll say, okay, go into the neighborhood and do these three roads, and next year might come back and do two more. And that's just a, a pretty significant impact for the community members in that group. So, when we come in, each road at a project level is going to be assessed. You know, in the residential, the bulk of our treatments are going to be chip seals, but we'll look at those roads. If they're in the good condition category and we can do a seal coat, which is going to be cheaper, then we'll do those. If it requires a chip seal or getting into those very poor areas, then we'll come in and we'll do those rehabilitations. So, we'll take one district, go through that neighborhood, through that whole district, and then we'll move on. And aside from crack sealing and some preventative maintenance items that'll occur ahead of the, the bulk of the treatments, then we'll leave that, that area and we won't come back until it's due again on its cycle. One thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was, and it was in your guys' packet, we are talking with Mojave County now, I've been talking to Mr. Lotosky from the Public Works, and they have indicated that they can, and I should have covered this honestly in the, the funding mechanism slide there for you, but Mojave County, that is based on Mojave County actually coming and doing chip seal with us. They have all the equipment, they have the spreader, they have the distributor trucks. And so, they provided us a, a ballpark price per square yard, what that would look like. We factored in materials and everything because we'd be purchasing that. And so, we'd work with Mojave County to complete that. That also included four full-time employees to help manage and prep for that. So, through the year, they're going to be prepping and crack sealing, doing all the patching, potholeing, shouldering, everything, getting ready to go into those neighborhoods. Each of those districts represents around 25 miles of each. Some of those are a little bit larger. The largest district we actually have, geographically, was difficult to break up in a, in a reasonable sense. So, it puts us up pretty close to 30 miles. So, again, we'll be doing, on average, about 25 miles of roadway each year based on this functional class. Want to cover with Mojave County, it was in your packet, we have a workshare agreement. And so, that's what we would utilize to have Mojave County work with us. We would work with them to do the chip seal in these residential areas, is in that workshare agreement, we have two options. We can trade out services. We can come in and say, you know, I'll work on your message board and you come do striping for us. And if it, if it averages out the same based on hours and, and materials, then it's a wash. The other option, which we actually do, we utilize it heavily for our, our long line markings program, all the roadway markings, not crosswalks and, and stop bars, but the long lines, is they come in and they paint for us. And at the end of the year, we add up, you know, the number of hours and, and they actually just bill us for that. So, our plan is to actually use that workshare agreement, and that was in your guys' packet for reference as well. And so, with that, that's the end of what I have, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you, Jack, for that presentation. Council, any questions for Mr. Plante?
I have some comments.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for that presentation and all the work that went into it. Sunday morning, I went downtown for breakfast, and I was never so happy to see those construction cones come Monday morning.
You and I both.
I was not only dodging potholes, they were more like craters. So, I welcome all the chaos that is happening right now because we, that means we are fixing roads. So, I really appreciate that project. The other thing I wanted to just put out there to the public is that we have been asked as council many times to spend down our reserves that we have, and why don't we put reserves into our roads? And we, as a council, have listened and we are doing exactly that. We are restrained as to how far we can spend those reserves down. And I think we are being fiscally responsible in spending those reserves down to where they need to be. And looking at this plan, like year nine through 15, when you said we're back to the barn restaurant tax, by then, I'm hoping that we see a vibrant community with more restaurant options and, and more population that will just contribute to that tax, so that then by that time, we will have a higher stream of revenue. So, all good things. I, I'm just, I'm happy to see some movement. I, I love the idea of the pavement preservation districts because I feel like everybody's going to get some attention. So, and it's not just going to be the major roads that we know are very vital to our community, but it's going to be that pothole out in front, in that street that's out in front of, of your home. So, I am so looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anybody else?
Mayor Watkins.
Yes.
Mr. Plante, back on page seven, you were mentioning that the fiscal year 22 is a little deceptive because it rolled over into fiscal year 23. Can you just clarify that for us?
Yeah, it's, just as you'd said, we had roughly $3 million budgeted. We're unable to get that work off the ground and moving. We had received proposals, actually, to get that work moving, but based on the schedules for the, the contractors that we utilize, we weren't able to get those going. Going into 23, what we struggled with, and that's why some of these are coming late, is the prep work that goes in ahead of those projects. And so, just like you had mentioned, the funds were there for 22. We were unable to get those executed, those agreements, and so, some of those are coming into play now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Jack, along those lines, I know we've seen numbers as a council that there was going to be like $10 million spent this fiscal year for 23. Is that, how is that breaking down? Are some of those monies transferring from years past? Are we going to even, and then you mentioned that we were only going to get $5 million this year for this fiscal year?
Yeah. So, there was $10 million budgeted.
Correct.
And, you know, with the, the wet fall and winter that we've had.
Yeah.
We're actually anticipating spending five of those, which is represented here. The other five is rolled and starched year one. So, we use some of the, the reserve funds, and then that additional $5 million is rolled over for next fiscal year and budgeted for additional projects.
And of course, cautioning everybody, I mean, that's great, but unfortunately, costs have gone up too. So, we're not as getting, we're not getting as much bang for our buck as we could have before this whole inflationary period has happened too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, councillor.
Hi, Jack.
Good presentation. A quick question. If I recall correctly, that there will be contractors involved as well as the county with this?
Yeah. So, there is, assuming that the county can't take everything, the total miles, especially, probably see that more on those larger years, we indicated that we have the ability or the option to do a small portion of that work with some contractors. And that was partly through those conversations with Mojave County. 25 miles is, is pretty comfortable for them at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, councillor Walker.
I'd like to thank staff for putting this together for us. And, Jack, I just have one question. You said you were going to have four employees?
Yes, sir.
Prepping? Are we ready for that? Do we have our equipment to, to be prepping?
So, we, generally, yes. In that, I did actually add a couple of vehicles. It would be support vehicles, and I apologize, I didn't cover that, but a crack seal machine, the one we have is nearing about 30 years old, so.
I thought you were going to say 50.
We, we've narrowed some of those down. We, we had to. We, we had a guy that'd been there probably since high school, and so, he looked natural on those 50-year-old pieces of equipment, but we all stick out, so we had to get rid of them. But, included a, included some support vehicles and a crack seal machine. And then the rest of the equipment we have is what we utilize in to help with completing that work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Walker, you bring up an important point. And, because, Jack, at the first of your presentation, you said you're short about six positions right now?
We're actually, had some luck in filling some of those. So, right now, I think we're sitting at two, two vacancies. So, it's gotten better since we had last met, but.
It's getting better. That's good. Of course, a lot of businesses are having that same issue here in Kingman of finding employees that, that are qualified that can do the work. So.
Yep.
The city has the same problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, councillor.
Jack, on that $5 million that you're rolling over roughly from this year, is that going to be still spent where it was intended to be spent this year on the arterials and collectors?
So, actually, moving into year one, the plan would be to actually get into the residential. Now, I will highlight that at the moment with, you know, we've had preliminary discussions with Mojave County, and they indicated in the fall, they would be able to accommodate us because they chip seal in the spring leading into the summer. And so, they would look at, the fall time would be our, our period for them to come in and work with us. So, assuming Mojave County and we can get prep work done, that money would be, we would still take care of the arterial collectors we had, but with the additional funds, we'd actually be taking care of residential as well.
Okay. My original question was, the money that's rolling over, you had a layout of streets that you were going to do with that money. Is that money still going to do those streets, which are all arterial and collector?
Yes, we will still complete the arterial collectors that we had planned and do residential.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, councillor Sealy.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I feel like you could come to every meeting and talk about streets, you know, people are very, very interested. And I just want to underscore how important it is that we spend every dollar that we have budgeted. You know, people are really disappointed to hear that we had $3.7 million in '22 and $10 million this year, but we're not spending it all, and so, we're sort of getting further and further behind. And I think that frustration continues to build in the community because of it. And I know you're doing the best you can, and, and I do appreciate that. But I just want to make sure that, starting now, we spend everything that gets budgeted every year so that we can really start making some progress on these streets, and then we can, we can move forward. So, thank you.
Of course, I would temper that thought because weather permitting, once again, is a huge factor in what we do. a huge factor in what we do.
No matter what.
Well, yes, but we can't control the weather. Anyway, any other questions for Mr. Plante? Okay, seeing none, thanks again, Jack.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate your presentation. Item number six, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan?
Yeah, so if you're looking to start a pavement preservation contracting business, would recommend that someone start those. The only real announcement that I have is to wish Counselor Pat a happy birthday. Other than that, I have no announcements. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Counselor Walker?
Nothing.
Okay. Counselor Savage?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor?
Happy birthday.
Cameron, we all have to embarrass you from time to time.
Yeah. If there's one way to embarrass me, it's about talking about me, so, thank you.
Counselor Ward? Counselor Saly?
I just have a quick announcement. Last week, I was invited to take a tour of the Beal Theater renovation project that's happening right down here on Beal Street, and I was blown away at the progress they had made. They have already raised about $770,000 for that project, and they, they are continuing to raise money and to get that theater open. They are hoping to have it open next year, and they will have events every single weekend in downtown. So, it won't just be theater events, but it'll be comedy shows, and live music, and any, any kind of entertainment that they can get in there, but every weekend, and so, that will be wonderful for our community and for our economy. I know people are coming from, like, Havasu and Bullhead to see their shows, so this is another great thing that's happening in Kingman, and I'm really excited about it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pat?
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Appreciate all the work that is done by staff, and of course, counselors, and attending the various commission meetings that you're assigned to. Want to thank you again for that. I did want to bring to light, I know Manager Foggan and I both receive, see this, and maybe some of you did too, is Catherine Heidrick Center is having a grand reopening ribbon cutting celebration on Friday, this Friday, March 10th, at 5:00 p.m. And I wanted to invite council, of course, to bring that to your attention, invite you to attend that, and of course, any public, I'm sure they would appreciate that too. And, of course, this is celebrating 50 years, which they actually completed last year, and as they enter their 51st year, they want to have this grand reopening ribbon cutting celebration. So, that's a great thing. The Catherine Heidrick Center, as you know, is our senior citizen center, and they provide a huge service to our community, and once again, we thank them and congratulate them. I have no other things to share with council. Item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Seeing none, I move that we adjourn. And we are adjourned. Thanks again for being here tonight.